Hi, welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting. August 25th, today is, it's about 5:03 PM and we're gonna start this meeting. Let's see here, Ricky, will you please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance? Ricky, you have to unmute yourself. Okay, I don't know if Ricky's still with us. We're just gonna start, ready? Begin. Go ahead Ricky.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm having difficulty hearing here, but hopefully I can figure this out. Okay, so. Dr. Breggy, do we have? We report closed session?
Would like to approve the agenda?
Yes, please.
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Passes 5-0. Dr. Breggy, did you want to report on closed?
Do you have any public?
Session? No, that'll be after clip, Report of Closed Session, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay.
Yes, I would. The board has voted 5 to 0 to approve Student Settlement 08H2020070870.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Breggy. At this moment, I'm gonna read four letters that we received as part of our public comment. Dear Dr. Breggy and Board members, I would like to start off sincerely thanking everyone who responded to my last letter to the Board introducing Diversify Our Narrative. I have heard from teachers, parents, students, and administrators who support this project. I greatly appreciate all the encouragement I've received. As a student devoted to making my school and community a better place, as well as an advocate for social justice, I am extremely disappointed with the recent events that have occurred within our BHUSD community. I'm sure many of you have read it firsthand, but a letter was sent anonymously to a Hawthorne parent. This letter was one of the most hateful and cruel pieces of writing I've ever read, and I am ashamed that such hatred exists in our community. After witnessing the response to this incident, I am worried about the administration may care more about how images of our schools are perceived than combating the actual systemic issues that have been exposed. I agree with Hawthorne's administration when they stated that our schools will not stand for hatred. However, signing one's name to a banner is simply performative and does nothing to combat the urgency of the actual issues at hand. This brings me to Diversify Our Narrative campaign. In order to actively create safe and inclusive schools, we need to assure that our students are taught to be anti- they are taught to be anti-racist through the incorporation of diverse texts into our curriculum. Reading more culturally diverse texts across the school sites will encourage students to be more open-minded about the various cultures that not only live in California, but within our very own community. Diversify Our Narrative will enable us to be productive, to have productive dialogues about topics such as cultural identity and racial inequality to empower historically marginalized people, and ultimately to become a genuinely anti-racist community. It is imperative that this district do more and signify outrage at these troubling events. We must take an intentional role in preventing the continuation of racism in our community. I am including the Diversify Our Narrative Board Resolution for you to look over, and I would like it to be added to the agenda at the next board meeting to be discussed and voted on. I sincerely hope you consider implementing these changes permanently, and I am open to discussing modifications, assuming they remain true to our proposal's intent. Sincerely, Georgia Evanson. And she's chapter lead for Diversify Our Narrative at BHUSD, and she attaches the resolution that should be entered into the record. Thank you, Mrs. Evanson, for submitting your letter. We have a few more letters. See here. Here we go. Comment. I really hope. And I'm not getting who this is from, I'm sorry. Oh, now I do see it now. I really hope that the district applies for a waiver for the elementary school students, at least once this number goes down below the required per 100,000. Our children are suffering in front of the screens and they need to be interacting with one another. And this comes to us from Mr. Thomas Montoya. Thank you, Mr. Montoya, for submitting your comments to the Board tonight. The next letter comes from Dr. Deborah Terme. Dear Board of Education, thank you for all that you've done. The numbers are going down, and as I am sure you are aware, once LA County and the Governor say it is safe for the kids to go back to school, are you ready? What preparations are happening? I already know we have the dedicated committee who has been touring the schools. Other than that, what is happening behind the scenes to be prepared for when schools do open? Thank you. And again, that comes from Dr. Terme. Thank you, Dr. Terme, for sending your email to us tonight. And the last letter that I have is from Mr. Hyatt. Bill Hyatt submitted the following letter. As conditions improve in Los Angeles County, it may not be too long before the Board considers reopening for in-person learning. The district has spent a lot of time planning for a possible reopening, but there may still be some areas that need to be addressed. We've already seen numerous examples of business K-12 and college reopenings that had to be delayed or reversed. Rushing into reopening too fast could lead to a disaster, especially given the medical evidence. We now know that the children's 10, children 10 and above transmit COVID-19 just as effectively as adults, that a few children and teens have died from COVID-19, and that many more could experience long-term detrimental effects, including inflammation or damage to major organs. School reopenings have also contributed in some instances to spikes in cases throughout the community, including vulnerable staff and community members in Pearl. What can we do to minimize these risks in Beverly Hills? First, reopening of the schools must be contingent on completing appropriate repair of ventilation systems. The district has already taken some steps in this direction. Because the primary mechanism for COVID transmission is aerosol droplets, air circulation preferably including the continuous drawing in of outside air is a crucial step in reducing the risk of infection. Second, we must, we need to back the mask requirements and reopening, the reopening plan with a strong enforcement. One of the factors sabotaging college reopenings has been students refusing to comply with COVID-19 regulations. Infections have spiked, students have been suspended, whole fraternities and sororities have been quarantined, and in, and in a few cases, colleges have tried to revert to online instruction. Common sense, common sense suggests that some high school students will follow the same pattern. When students returned briefly to campus last year, some of them were, were seen taking off masks and not observing social distancing. Some of them were reluctant to comply when cautioned by staff members. If reopening is to work, the high school in particular needs to respond firmly to students who do not comply. Unmasked students need to be kept outside classrooms and other populated areas until they put on masks. Refusal means reassignment to completely online program. Repeated violations also mean reassignment to online instruction. The Constitution does not give students or anyone else the right to jeopardize the health and perhaps the lives of others. Third, the second, the, I'm sorry, third, this school needs to work with parents to ensure that COVID guidelines are, guidelines are followed at home. Only parents can prevent off-campus gatherings that can potentially spread infection. A large number of college problems have been caused by parties that produce infection clusters.
I'm sorry to interrupt, that was three minutes.
And then I'm just gonna finish with the last final sentence. We'd all like to get back to in-person instruction as soon as possible, but rushing the process too fast makes it more likely to fail. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyatt, for submitting your letter to the Board tonight. And that concludes our public comment. I'm going. So. We change frames here. Okay, we're gonna go right into our staff presentations. Mr. Blake has an update for us on the former oil, Benico Oil Wells. Mr. Blake, the floor is yours.
Mary Jane, you're muted. Are you able to put the PowerPoint up? Or Michael, do you have control of the screen?
I don't have the PowerPoint. Rebecca, do you have it?
I can pull it up, just give me one second. If it's attached to the agenda, I can pull it up right now, sure.
Yes. Thank you.
Are you in Colorado? Are you?
No, no, I'm, I'm in my home here in Beverly Hills. This is just a photo of my front yard.
I just wanna make sure I know where you are.
That's your front yard, we're paying you too much.
So Rebecca, are you putting it up, or do I, would you like me to?
I am, it's 80% downloaded. If you have it, feel free to share your screen, but it's on its way.
Okay, thank you.
Know if you can see it, and also when you would like me to change a slide.
Okay. As you know, the 19 oil wells, or the oil well site is right next to the softball field and the football diamond. And we, if you wanna change the slide, please. We had 19 oil wells when we started, and the facility was overpressured. Next slide, please. It was owned by Benico, and Benico went bankrupt, and so the bankruptcy judge gave the oil well site and the wells to the school district. In February 20th of 2018, the Beverly Hills City Council approved a contract in order to help abandon the wells, help the school district abandon the wells. And so we've been working on that ever since. Next slide, please. The project manager was City Public Works. The contractor was ARB Inc. We were the consultant, WCI. And we started in May of 2018, and we're going to be finished in October 2020. And we have one of the 19 wells left to abandon, to plug. And there are two that have issues with shallow gas that need a little bit of remediation, so we're working on those currently. Next slide. The three that are needing to be completed, OS-10 is the one that we're just on now. If you see the Derek when you go by on Olympic, that's the one that we're working on. It has certain risks with getting it done properly, so we don't have shallow gas intrusion. OS-9, we had a lot of high-pressure water that was flowing at us during the entire plugging, and it is gonna take some reentry in order to get it finally secured. And OS-13 is our other shallow gas well that we're currently working on. And if we can't get the shallow gas shut off, even though it is approvable by CalGen, then we'll have to reenter that one. So these are our days that are basically left, our projects left to do that we'll be doing between now and October. After that, next slide, please. Oh, I should tell you how much. Okay. Dawn, did you wanna talk about the costs?
Yes, this is a lot of detail on the right, but what you see on the left is really the story. This was a breakdown from the city in June. We did a request for reimbursement, and for the project costs, we're projecting $31,692,996 for completion. And we issued a reimbursement to the city, you'll see in the yellow for 5 million. And what that accounting is, I know it's kinda small. But the city's share over 24 million was 11 million, which is noted, less the district's reimbursement of 11 million, and less a reimbursed, there you go, number two, totaled reimbursement to the city for 5 million. So if you could go, and what this accounting shows in detail is how much the city paid and how much the district has paid total. So if we go to the next line. Thank you. So the projected hard cost, this is ARB, this would be for the cost for the work, is 32 million approximately. And the cost for what we call soft cost, which was the original bankruptcy, bankruptcy of around $2 million, I think that number, wow, that's even hard for me to read. On the right. And the soft cost, which is consultants, and if you move it to the, to the right, I guess, for the large, thank you. About 4 million, 4.3 million costs that were for the original bankruptcy costs and the soft costs. So the total project cost currently, and as Mary Jane described, we have about 10 days on the last oil well, and perhaps another couple of days left. So we're pretty comfortable with this estimated cost to complete at 36 million. So the next slide. This is a section of the agreement with the city indicates the 22 million or less cost of the work, city's maximum share was 9 million originally. That was moved from 22 to 23 million, would be 10 million, and you follow through a sliding scale down to 24 million, and 11 million was the city's contribution. So the next line.
It's what it'll look like when it's done.
So what you see over to the far left in the red lines is once the wells have been capped and approved by CalGen, then the site that has material, equipment, concrete will be removed and be brought to a level where you will have vaults below grade, and will bring the, bring the area to a certain elevation. Once that elevation is complete, and we begin the site work, we'll be raising that area up about eight feet where the, you see behind the softball field, and that will be one continuous grade, and that will be the final completion of the scope of work for the Benico Oil Well Project.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, and thank you, Mrs. Wilson, for being here tonight. I think this is a very big piece of work that has been going on at Beverly Hills High School, and I thought it was so important to bring it to the public to understand where we are with the status of the completion of the project. So thank you again for being here. At this point, I'd like to ask, just kinda go around, see if Board members have any questions or comments. Mr. Marcus?
Thank you. Dawn, the process after October, is there just a quick overview of what happens with as far as scraping the site, time involved, getting to the point where you're actually gonna bring in the dirt and level it out? Do you have, is that gonna work continuously, or is that gonna need to break in between the other work being done on the site?
Well, from our perspective, I think Mary Jane can also comment on it. The real issue is CalGen sign-off on the capping, that would be one. And then the next milestone will be the procurement and pricing process for the demolition, which will be a project by itself. Our normal procurement process, we would expect that to be at most 60 days.
Is that something that you can do in advance? Get that going, knowing that the end is nigh?
I would love to, but we, in this case, we need approvals from two agencies. CalGen, and the other is GTSC.
So you have to have the approvals before you can go for the bids?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It defines the scope of work.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Well, I just wanna say that this is gonna be a red-letter day when when this is all cleaned up. And it's been a long time coming. And eventually, it's gonna be a very meaningful expansion of our athletic field. Because I think everybody knows that Beverly High is short on acreage, and, and especially in the athletic field, so it'll be some time coming, but that's our goal.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, and Mrs. Walker-Schmidt.
Thank you, Miss. For the presentation, to kinda catch up with all the work that's been going on. I think it's, with so many things happening right now with COVID, it's very easy to miss the massive, massive undertaking projects that we've got going on in the district. So thanks for reminding us where we are with that and bringing us up to speed. My, my only personal request is that we absolutely not ever consider naming this the Benico Memorial Softball. But beyond that, I'm really thrilled to see what the potential is for after the remediation is done, and my God, we will all be so happy to have this project behind us. Thanks.
Mrs. Marcus.
I remember sitting at a meeting well over two years ago when this first came up, and it was a meeting I remember at Roxbury Park, when they began to talk about the revending these oil wells. And at that point, I remember thinking, wow, it's gonna get, you know, no, but the amount of work and the time that it's taken in the years that's gone by has been amazing, and it's been quite an achievement. And I'm gonna compliment the city, the school for the way it's been handled. I would like to ask one question to Dawn. Dawn, you mentioned preparing the land where the site presently is, and lifting it up to eight feet. What do you mean by the, that it's so low in the ground, you're bringing it up to eight feet to meet the level of the playing field now? What did you mean by that?
Well, the current elevation, I think, Mary Jane's about eight feet down from the current grade where the, where the, currently the, the concrete elevation is.
That's correct. And the wells are further down than that.
Okay, it'll be fill, we'll be filling that space with soil to bring it up about eight feet for the, a level. So all of the ball fields are all at the same level.
Okay, that was a question that I had. Well, congratulations on almost finishing it, and I look forward to seeing those ball fields one day and watching the kids play ball on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. So Dawn, I don't have any questions, I just wanna say thank you again for being here with us tonight. I think that the complexity of the projects has been very significant, and I'm very pleased, and very costly also for the community. So I wanted to, I thought it was important to capture where we are in time with the progress of those projects once again. So thank you for being here, and I will ask for you to come back shortly when you think it's an appropriate time to discuss the other oil wells that we have on campus. So, Dr. Breggy, if you could, you know, follow up with Mr. Blake and his staff and find out when that would be an appropriate time. I, I'd like to see that also happen. And I have one more request for you for an update on facilities, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. The update on the auditorium at Hawthorne. I keep out, I keep getting asked that question randomly around the city. And so I, I do understand that it's, 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 it has a lot to do with TSA and plans, but I think we should, we should probably at some point start, you know, giving, providing the community an update as to where we are and where we perceive that project to be heading in the near future, or maybe not in the near future. So I'm gonna make that request, please. Thank you so much. Thank you again for being here. Any other questions, Board members, staff, anybody else, before Mr. Blake leaves?
I think we still have some more.
Yes. Yes, we do.
Thank you, Mary Jane.
Thank you, Mary Jane.
Hey. Thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence, and thank you for your support during this difficult project.
Thanks, Mary Jane. Good seeing you. Good seeing you. Okay, moving on, may I please have a motion?
There any items that need to be pulled? I will move to approve the consent calendar.
I will second. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Okay, any questions or discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I, okay, Pam, that passes 5-0. Mrs. Marcus made the motion, and I seconded it. Thank you all. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, may I please have a motion? What, wait a minute.
It's the superintendent's report.
Yes, it is. Mr. Dr. Breggy, please, you're up.
Thank you.
Can everybody please mute themselves? I think that'd be so appropriate, so that we can hear Dr. Breggy, 'cause I'm hearing feedback. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. So we've been talking a lot about the changing numbers. I heard it as well in our public comments tonight. And this is a good thing for LA County. And I just wanted to, one thing that we really haven't talked about a lot are just what those metrics are for, you know, the monitoring list and how coming off of that list and what that looks like. So I wanted to just give everybody kind of an idea of what these six metrics are that we've been looking at. We actually look at them every single day, because they change every day. And so the first metric on here is the, the number of tests that are actually performed. And we are really, as a reminder, looking at what happens in LA County. And even though, you know, Beverly Hills, we've our, our, you know, our own area, we sometimes forget that we're part of a larger county. And so much of that data is looked at as a county and not a city. So that sometimes works to our advantage, and sometimes it doesn't. But for this first metric is the number of daily tests that are done for COVID-19. And so we're doing very well in this area. As you know, testing has been widely available. So this is, you know, something that is a metric that has performed very well for us as a county, and so that it's not an issue at all for us. The second one is the testing positivity rate, and that is being below 8%. This is a rolling calendar, if you will, with the number of people that are testing positive for COVID-19. And so it's a kind of a rolling seven-day period that they look at, so it's that snapshot. We've been well below 8% now for Um, we've been well below eight percent now for a a few weeks now, uh two to three weeks. So that's a good sign. So numbers are are definitely in our favor. Um, so that is something that is we're able to kind of check that box, so to speak, as far as uh where we are. Do we meet that metric? And we do. Um, the third metric is the case rate uh per one hundred thousand residents. And it's impressive to know even just. The in the the public comment, that's super impressive to me that other people are looking at this as well. Um, and I'm I'm very glad to to know that people are interested and that they are looking at this information. Um, in order to meet this metric, we have to be below a hundred cases per every one hundred thousand dollar, one hundred thousand residents. Um, three weeks ago, uh, we were at almost like four hundred um in in of Kate of new cases. Um, three weeks ago, two to three weeks ago, um, it started to come down. I think we were at um even three hundred and fifty-five cases just ten days ago. Um, and now we've ju- just dipped today, just below uh two hundred cases. And so we're at one ninety-seven. That was just reported. Uh, we just looked at that a few minutes ago. Um, and so and that's a good sign. Um, but to meet this metric, which we have not met this metric yet, we have to be below a hundred cases. And as I mentioned, we're at one ninety-seven right now. Um, three of the other metrics, we've been good for a long time. Um, we've been looking at this for months. Uh, the uh the hospitalization rates in our region, uh, the number of ICU beds and how many patients are actually on a ventilator. Um, we've been meeting those for a long time. So what this really means is that with six metrics that we've been looking at uh and following every day. Uh, there's one metric that seems to be uh standing in our way, and that is the metric for uh the case rate. And so, as I mentioned, just dipped below. Uh, two hundred uh cases today at one ninety-seven, but that's what's holding us up uh on being uh considered to be um off of the the monitoring list. Um, when that happens, when we meet the uh the caseload below a hundred cases, that's when we come off the monitoring list. And in in order to then be able to look at opening schools, we have to be at a place where uh we're we are um fourteen consecutive days. That we're able to stay off of that list. So in other words, these six metrics right here, we have to make sure for fourteen consecutive days that we've met all of those. So that has not started yet. We still have a ways to go with the number of cases. Um, but I think that the the transmission within the community is people are doing a better job. Of 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 understanding uh that we do have some control in uh mitigating the the spread. And so and I think that we're seeing the results of that and that's um all good news for us. Um, just a couple of things about where we're at. Um, we had our opening day for staff. Um, and that was uh just over a week ago. Uh, we had our first ever staff meeting uh in thanks to the uh technical capabilities that we have within Zoom. Uh, that we had an all staff meeting with a a record number of people. Um, it was over three hundred staff members that participated in that meeting, uh which was very productive. Uh, for an opportunity for us to give information, but for also for us to uh be able to hear some of the questions um from people in our own staff. Uh, we had a great opening day, a very successful day. Um, and we were so pleased that we had uh all of our Board of Education present. Uh, we had our city council members, people from um the Beverly Hills Police Department and Fire Department, uh and of course, our BHF and PTA also present. Um, and uh speaking and and doing introductions as well. Uh, we had three days this year. Uh, so we had an additional day, which we swapped. With an instructional day so that we could provide our staff with the uh professional development opportunities. I've never seen so many opportunities available to staff before. Uh, but we were able to do that and um, you know, really grateful to our staff uh for taking advantage of um these opportunities. Um, people uh really gravitated towards uh what we were offering and people signed up for them quickly and um and they were very engaged in the process. So I was very thankful to. Uh, see that in 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 progress. Also, a shout out just to our technology department. Um, it miracles in technology can happen if you have the right people um and the right plan, and we certainly did. And so if, you know, to be able to see our organization from the inside out. Which I realize a lot of people don't have that opportunity, uh but luckily I have that along with a lot of people that I get to work with staff and principals. Um, it it, we saw something happen that I did not think could ever happen in my entire career. And in in what our small technology department was able to do. In in the amount of time that they have was beyond something that I could have ever imagined. So what they were able to turn around, um I will never be able to thank them enough. Um, and also for our staff with just the flexibility to be able to allow this to happen so that they could get what they needed um on time. So. Very grateful for our technology department, uh Mr. Damico and his staff. Um, here is our uh opening day video. Um, I just want to show you really quickly. We had a great uh opening day start. Um, we have a lot of new staff and so I just want to take a couple of minutes and and share that with you as you see uh and welcome some new faces to our school district. And some faces that uh uh you've seen before. So if we just take a couple of minutes, um and I just want to share this with you. Okay, and moving along to um, I, and and, you know, I just want to say, though, um, you know. There's probably never been this much change in in our lifetimes in education. And uh, so the new staff that you saw in the beginning. Um, to be able to attract still some top caliber candidates, um our new staff is impressive, very impressive. So I. I look forward for uh all of you to to meet them as soon as possible. Uh, we're really lucky to have them. Um, just a couple of other quick updates in my report. Um, as you know, we have been working very hard on a strategic plan on simultaneously. You know, with everything else and that's going on in our district. And I feel very good about the framework that's been established uh with the with the committee. Uh, we've received some feedback from the Board of Education, which is um really comprehensive feedback, which is um uh really going to take some time to. Um, to look at and implement and have some discussions. Um, and it's it's really worthwhile and robust feedback. So. Uh, we're gonna be meeting again on August thirty-first, first to consider that feedback and then to start to look at that revision process. Um, and that's really just the nature of strategic plans anyway. And so uh, we're excited to be able to implement this. Feedback into this revision and this document is a livable, breathable document. So every year, we're going to have this opportunity to be able to. Um, uh, get feedback and then to uh to provide the types of revisions that we need to uh in the future. And you'll see that that we're hopefully going to be able to finalize this in September. Um, we have a board meeting on the twenty-second, so we're shooting for that time. And then you're going to see after after this is approved, uh, you're going to see how the strategic plan uh really helps guide our decision making. And so you're going to see a lot of our strategic plan. Um, in how we budget and how we make decisions in our school district. Um, and we will also be able to align. Um, our Board of Education agenda so that we're able to show um the public how we are making decisions that are based upon. A a strategic plan as a roadmap to the future and improvement. So we're super excited and that's going to be happening. Um, in the month of September and you'll be hearing and seeing a lot more of the strategic plan uh in the future. Um, we had a great first day. Um, it was historic. There's never been a first day. Um, uh, in any school district in the world that has been like the one that we just experienced. And so I just want to thank um our staff, our parents. Um, um, teachers, faculty, just everybody involved. This was a a full three sixty support. Uh, do some of the things that we wouldn't normally have to do, but building relationships. Uh, many of our students are meeting teachers for the first time. On a screen. And so we needed to do things a little bit differently the first week. And so now we're into week two and um I'm sure that you will start seeing a routine. Um, and some things happening instructionally. And I'm already hearing a lot of positive things um about the the delivery. Um, through through our method of Zoom and um Google Classroom and other technology uh offerings that we have. So we do have something new that we're doing this year with um with providing some food service. Um, this is not just for our students that. Um, are are free and reduced lunch. We're in a COVID nineteen period, so um we are having to uh look at how we do things a little bit differently. And this is a great. Enhancement to our food service program where we're providing a pickup. It's once a week. Um, this is all actual food that we're actually uh offering. And you can see that there's some. Um, you know, if you look at like the milk, for example, and um some of the like, this is all the real food. So it's once a week, but you actually. Um, can pick this up and it's like going to a grocery store. And so um, this is six dollars a day for uh our full pay students. And so. Um, you know, this is uh something that new that we're trying and it's it's taking off very well and people are taking advantage of this. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of this brand new opportunity. And I do want to take a think and a chance to thank our PTAs and PTSA, um, you know, again throughout the summer and then through now the kickoff of the school year. Uh, we're starting to get into our routine. So um, I want to thank everyone involved with our PTA, PTSA, um, and our BHF uh organization as well. Um, and we're already starting to have meetings and we are getting into that routine of our school year. Um, and students are certainly in the. Uh, focus and in front of all of our thinking and decisions. So um, it's off to a really good start in that area too. And so I just want to thank everybody. Um, like I said, it's been an interesting uh start to the school year. Uh, but collectively. Um, I think that we really have come together um as an organization and as a staff. Um, and I think that uh we're we're able to see. Uh, a lot of the work that that has been done over the summer. Um, and everyone's heart is really in providing the very best that we can for our students. So. I look forward to keeping you updated on um a lot of the COVID nineteen information because I know that that's kind of in the forefront of everybody's mind. Um, and that is a top priority for us. So you'll be hearing from me shortly um about our next steps with COVID nineteen efforts. So thank you very much and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Brege. So we will start with student board member, Mr. Krishanian.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a great start to the school year. I've heard many of my fellow classmates classmates complaining about the long hours we need to spend our on our computers. Personally, there were days where my eyes started to burn and tear up due to the long hours that I've been spending on my laptop. I don't think that this should be the case because it seems very unhealthy. However, I do know that there are certain amount of hours. That need to be met every week in order to meet the required hours for a school year. I've heard suggestions of shortening shortening class times by ten to fifteen minutes. I've also heard a suggestion of making Wednesdays instruction free. So that students can get a break in the middle of the week to study and get some time off the computer. I'm sure if this will. I'm sure if the, I'm not sure if this will correlate with the required hours needed in a school year, but. But um, I'm sure that if we change it, then it'll definitely help get some stress off of students. Another concern that I've been hearing is that teachers are going past their instructional minutes, leaving students with little time to get up and stretch, use the restroom, get water and get situated for their next class. We only have ten minutes in between most classes. And when teachers go past their period's bell, students are left with little time to get ready for their next class. I think these two issues should be addressed as they will make the lives of BHUSD students much less stressful. Other than that, class time has been going great. Teachers and students are getting more and more comfortable with the online platform. Technical issues are slowly dying down. And class participation is going up, especially with the new breakout room feature on Zoom. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Krishanian. So I just want to ask, do you have any questions for Dr. Brege before I turn it over to Mr. Margot in regards to his superintendent's report?
I do not.
Okay, thank you for your report as well. So, Mr. Margot, if you'd like to either ask Dr. Brege or student board member, Mr. Krishanian, any questions about the reports, this is your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Yoni, I never would have thought I'd hear a teenager complaining about too much screen time. You're definitely, definitely in a weird world. Um, but thank you for that input. It actually, it actually helps. I check in with my daughter about things like that. And Dr. Brege, I I've heard that. It's it's being addressed already, I think. Um, from what I hear on my end of the spectrum that their. Teachers are starting to talk about it. And I believe you guys are talking about it, about how to balance screen time through all of this. So um, I trust that that'll be attended to. Um, the the, I I, Dr. Brege, I wanted to to pick your brain for a second and put maybe to rest. So rumor that's been going around in the community regarding. The school board having to require vaccinations of COVID before kids can return. Um, I think there was a brief conversation a couple of months ago about um county health and their ability, you know, we have to do a T-DAP test for seventh graders. Um, tuberculosis, diptheria, all that. And and we, I think we had brought it up in passing at a meeting that that was discussed at. But I wanted to put the rumor to rest and have it come from you. So uh perhaps people will stop uh spreading, you know, um, the negativity about what the board's. Ability to even implement something like that is.
Yeah, so and thank you for asking the question because I've also heard that as well. Um, you know, I I think that we are in this culture now of like. Um, you know, vaccines and testing and we keep hearing these things and they're, the words are being used interchangeably. And um, so I'm I'm happy to clear up the rumor. You know, at this point with with not even having a vaccine that's been developed, um, you know, that that there is, there are no requirements at this time. Uh, that that anybody have a vaccine because it it hasn't even been developed yet. So um, that's, that's not out there. It's not to say that that may not come. At another time, but um, I would guess that that's probably years away.
Right. And there's no contingency, even in the county level, the county health of a vaccine being required for student accessibility to school. It's it's not even being discussed, right?
It is not even at a discussion level in the county. And um, you know, I'm I'm, I am in this every day really deep. Um, and I can tell you that there's, there's no discussion of that at this time.
Okay. And I don't believe it's something that a board could implement anyway, if we wanted to. That would have to come from county health. Or the state. Okay, great. Thank you for dispelling that rumor. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Hager.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Well, I want to congratulate uh.
Well, I want to congratulate the staff, everybody that had to do with the opening of the school year. My feedback that I've had is positive. As good as, as good as can be expected under the circumstances. And I know that we all look forward to being able to get back to normalcy as soon as we can.
Okay, Mrs. Mark Schuman.
I just wanted to again wish a very fond welcome back to all of the staff and students. I know these are super unusual circumstances, but all the few those part positive, I will say, I think a lot of people were happily surprised that this is very different from Home Learning 2.0. So I think that, you know, standard was met. I've actually heard a few people say it's too much, it's too much work and too much school and too many minutes. I do agree actually with Yoni on the a couple of issues that he raised. I know that it's difficult for students to be for so much time in their chairs and things like that. I recognize that, you know, from an instructional perspective, we have to maintain certain things over, and that makes it very difficult for them to have enough time to take a breath, take a bathroom break, get some water, get some food. So I do appreciate that. I know that that's happening and I look forward to hearing some suggestions, you know, from staff and from our teachers and things like that. 90 minutes are long, so I think we need to find a way to break it up a little bit. And I think that's, I think that's for the most part it. You know, we're at the start of our second week of school. I've heard a lot of people say that they're looking at getting those, you know, verit desks so you can stand or sit. I think that's probably helpful to kids. But there's no doubt, we all have to recognize that it's a really unusual situation and there are going to be impacts from that. So I hope we're able to to make investments. And thanks, Noah, for dispelling that rumor. At a time like this, when there are so many fears that are driving conversations, it's really great to get clarity on on what can be debunked. So thanks for bringing that up.
Mrs. Marcus.
Hi, good evening. I would like to thank Dr. Brege for the comprehensive and very wonderful report. Interesting to keep the stakeholders informed of what's going on. I too have heard a few comments about the length of time in front of the screen. And what what Tristan mentioned, but which we had already got in my mind is you can't, you can't win them all. In other words, either you do or at 2.0, it was not enough. And now we're here and it's too much. And I'm hearing that there's got to be a way of maybe somehow relieving the students so they can give their eyes a break during the day and what have you. And I know that the teachers are beginning to feel that also. So I'm sure that the kids will probably be, when they get settled in and get used to it, that it'll be a lot better. But I think teachers are beginning to give kids a break and so on and figuring out how to give the students a chance to turn their eyes away from the screen a little bit. I want to compliment the teachers on the tremendous job that they did in getting ready to come to the classroom and getting the, being ready to teach the kids. I'm only hoping that within the next few weeks, I can be a fly on the wall in some of these classrooms and get to observe some of the classrooms because I don't have any children in the school. And I really am interested in what goes on in the classroom. I really like to see it firsthand. I've always been a teacher. I'll continue to be a teacher. And I always love to see lessons and love to see what the teachers are doing. So I'm hoping that that can be arranged. I think I've mentioned that even when we did 2.0, I was able to visit the classroom and see one such example. So I want to thank Yoni for his comments and his very honest bringing out about what's going on with his fellow classmates. I think that's great that he keeps in touch with them. And I think that he's really getting the pulse of his classmates. So I think that's a good thing. And I think that's about it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. Just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and welcoming back staff and students back to our school and starting the year in such a good, you know, foot. And I really appreciate the insight that Mr. Krishanian has shared with us from the perspective of the students' experience so far. And so I look forward to hearing more about, you know, what transcends in the next few weeks. And Dr. Brege, just as always, thank you for all of your commitment and leadership during these very difficult months behind us. And and, you know, we had such an opportunity to start on the well, very, very well last week. And I think families, for the most part, I have not heard any complaints. And I think everyone's quite satisfied. So I am very, very pleased with the way things have resulted in these last two weeks. So thank you for all of the efforts led by you, your administration, of course, our teachers. And of course, our parents for being partners in this process. So thank you. Of course, we are going to move on with our agenda. Let me just switch screens here. We are going to have a item 11A under Business and Finance information about 2019, or 2019, 2020 unaudited actuels and preview and ending fund balance assignments. And I'm assuming Mr. Roach is going to lead the discussion.
Yeah, thank you, President Hacker, members of the board. Very quick presentation tonight, just to review the report you'll see actually at the next board meeting, the unaudited actuels and the fund balance. So next slide, Rebecca. We just want to kind of go over the general fund revenues and expenses from last year. Talk about the restricted program carryover. And they get some guidance from the board on the assignment of some ending fund balances. Next slide. So when we look at our general fund revenues from last year, we have a chart here where we have the 18, 19 actuels. We have the 19, 20 final budget and then the 19, 20 unaudited actuels. So the first line you see there is the beginning fund balance. You'll see in 18, 19, that beginning fund balance was about 7.9 million. But at the beginning of 19, 20, that fund balance was about 9.2 million. We have property tax revenue last year was, if you look on the third column, $55.2 million. That was our property tax revenue. We had some state aid and Education Protection Protection Act revenue of about $2 million. All our other state revenue was about 5.5 million. We get a little bit of federal revenue, 1.6 million. And we got, we get quite a substantial amount of local revenue, about 15.3 million. So our total revenue last year in the general fund, this is just the general fund, was about 79.8 million. And you can compare that to the year before, 18, 19 was about 73.2 million dollars. So next slide, Rebecca. Then on the expense side of the of the ledger, we have our 19, 20 expenses. Our salaries for certified and classified folks was about 44.2 million. Our benefits for our employees was about 21 million. Our actual supply costs was about 1.7 million. Services was about $10 million. And then transfers to other fund, and that's our support of our food service program, was about $357,000. So in total, last year in 19, 20, we expended about $77.5 million in the general fund, which equated to about 97% of the actual revenue we collected. So just looking back the prior year, in 18, 19, we expended $71.9 million, which was about 98.3% of revenue. So our expenses to total revenue actually went down a little bit in 19, 20. But a lot of that is related to what happened with COVID and the fact that for a third of the year, we were not physically on campus. So we want to go to the next slide and kind of a, kind of talk about that. So in that category, services and other expenses, when we look at and break that down, because we had budgeted $12 million, we only expended a little bit over $10 million. So what was that delta? Why is there a difference? So you'll look at something like conference and travel where we, which is a small category. We budgeted 200,000, but we only expended 173,000. That's really because a lot of our employees weren't, weren't on campus. They weren't able to attend conferences and professional development. So there's a delta. There's, we expended less money. But in a bigger category like utilities, you could really see the impact of us not being at the school site. So we budgeted 1.9 million as for electricity, gas, garbage collection, things like that. We only expended 1.7 million dollars. So that's a $200,000 less in expenditures. In our non-public agency, these are services we buy for some of our at-risk students. So we budgeted 600,000. We've only expended a little over 300,000. So there was a quarter of a million dollars of savings there. Our contracted security, so we set aside almost a million dollars for contracted security services. But because we had less people on campus, or actually our campuses were closed, we did not utilize all of that contract and only spent just under $700,000, saving the district about 300,000. And then finally, legal fees, and you kind of wonder why, how's that related to COVID? Well, the court system was backed up, so some of our court dates were are postponed. So some of our legal fees have been reduced in last, in the last school year. So even though we budgeted 1.7, we only expended 1.3, saving us about $360,000. So the the COVID pandemic has had the impact on our expenditures. So when we look at our our general fund ending fund balance, it's 11.4 million dollars. Of that amount, part of it is what we call restricted balance. These are what we used to call our categorical programs. So you can see that on that list in front of you. The biggest portion of that are lottery funds. We have some carryover of miscellaneous gifts. We have a low performing student block grant, some some categories. These are our old categorical funds, and these are restricted. So these, these are really assigned specifically for these categories. So next slide. So when we look at our total ending fund balance, we look at two components. We look at the general fund and need fund balance, which is 11.4 million dollars, and Fund 17, which is our set aside for reserve, which is about 10.8 million. You add those two categories together and you get 22.3 million dollars. So of that amount, we have to set aside some for revolving cash, $50,000. We set aside for that, those legally restricted categories that we just talked about. That's a little over a million dollars. And we also have to set aside 20% for, per our board policy for our locally restricted. So 20% of our of our budget is 16.3 million dollars. So you take the 22 million and you subtract all those categories, and that leaves you available for assignment about 4.8 million dollars. Next slide. So at this point, staff's recommendation for when we bring the unaudited actuels to the board at the next board meeting is that of this 4.8 million dollars, we assign 5% of that, or 5%, the equivalent of 5% reserve are $4 million. We set that aside because we're concerned about a decrease in property taxes next year because of the economic impact of COVID. So and because we think there may be some additional state reductions and deferrals, staff at this time would recommend of the 4.8 million dollars, we set aside a little bit of over $4 million because of the potential for a decrease in property taxes. But we'd also recommend to the board that we set aside about $800,000 for some unfunded projected COVID expenses. We're going to need some additional PPE. We're going to need additional time to get our facilities ready. And we had talked about some monies we've already received from the state and federal government for the COVID pandemic, but we had already utilized all of those dollars. So we had some unfunded costs and we'd like to set aside $800,000 of the general fund to address some of these anticipated costs. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'd love to get some directions if the board thinks we're on the right path for the assignment of the available funding, the fund balance.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Roach and Mr. Margaret.
Thank you. Do we want to go to Mr. Krishanian first before I talk or?
Yes, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
He private texted me, but that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, can you roll back to the other screen with the? Great, thanks. Thank you, Wade, for this presentation. It's been pretty consistent to have ending fund balances. This one happens to be a little larger, like you pointed out, due to COVID. I'm delighted that it is and that it exists. I think that for the unassigned or the available for assignment, is the number that you picked, and do you feel that that's going to be enough? That's going to be adequate or?
Ms. Starkins, can you go to the next slide? As far as for the the COVID expenses or?
Yeah, the 816. Is that, do you do you feel, is that a conservative number for that? Is there, do you want to bring a little more from the 5% reserve? Maybe make it 4 million even up there and then raise that number down below? So you have the padding, obviously, it doesn't need, it's a budget. It doesn't need to be expended and it'll be added to the next round of unassigned funds, so.
I mean, $4 million is a nice even number to put into the assignment for property taxes. We can do it either way in at the, say, the first interim reporter. Even before that, we could come back to the board and adjust these assignments at a later time.
Okay, yeah, as long as there's flexibility in those assignments, I think we just don't know yet. We don't, we don't know because we're not sure. For instance, when we do start coming back, are we going to come back all at once? Are we going to come back in tiers or transitional, which would impact the utilities, right? You know, you'd get, you'd bring your utilities back online slowly. So it's a hard number to really figure out. And how long would we exist in a hybrid version, if possible, or complete regular schooling? Because that would dictate PPE and other things, accommodations that we've made. So I just want to make sure we're covered. Kind of, this thing seems to be moving at a rapid pace and an unpredictable pace. So make sure we're covered either way. If we could shift the funds around as needed, this, what you're presenting is perfectly acceptable.
Is that up, Mr. Riz, or Margaret?
That's it.
Mr. Spitz.
Well, I'm delighted to see the positive numbers. And and I think the recommendation for the assignment of almost $5 million is 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 intelligent. I have no problem with it. I would just like to point out that we're on solid ground now at this present time, budget wise. And and I can tell you that, at least in my opinion, had we not reconfigured our schools, if we were, if we were taxed by the cost of operating four middle schools that were that had insufficient enrollments, small classes. If we were taxed by that, and if we were taxed by the the whole, the formula that tied salaries to property tax revenue, we wouldn't be seeing these positive operating numbers. And so it's, it's, it just shows that we really have accomplished a lot in the last few years. And one thing I would like to have us consider is this. The the percentage reserved that that is currently a board policy is 20%. My understanding is that 25% is a minimum that is recommended by most experts for basic aid districts. And so I think that we should consider setting that objective, that goal of 25% rather than 20% in the future. in the future. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Marcus Schuman.
I think that we, you know, we're in a situation where we're very much benefited by looking for the silver lining of of the current pandemic. And this happens to be one of the reduction in expenses, I think, makes makes for a good outcome in this particular scenario. So I'm happy to see this. I want to just confirm, Wade, I I remember in our budget, we already had set money aside for our contribution to OPEB. Not just the minimum that we were going to pay, but but the pay as you go as well, right? Both of those are still included in the budget?
Correct. We we actually budgeted both. We budgeted the actual costs for the current fiscal year, and then we set aside an additional 2%, and that's in the budget. Correct.
Okay, so this is over and above, which is is really wonderful. I think this is a very safe way to plan. They're going to be, I like the idea of being a little conservative and trying to save, you know, some money aside for unexpected drops in our income and revenue. And I absolutely think that we're going to need more PPE than than the funds we've been provided so far cover. So I think this is a pretty safe way to allocate it. Yes, and I agree with I agree with Mr. Spitz that this is a lot about reconfiguration as well. I think that the impact has been tremendous, not only, you know, the upsides and benefits on the students, but obviously in our in our fiscal stability as well. So that that should be pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Wade for a very clear and quick summation of the actual and the budgeted amounts and and the importance of seeing that and getting to see it so clearly is really wonderful, and I want to thank him for that. A couple of the things that were I was planning to say have already been covered. I was going to talk about whether the OPEB was in there, and of course it is according to him. What about, I also wanted to wonder about the maintenance and operations, the deferred projects, the deferred maintenance, and that's in for the future of the budget for next year, as well as the one that we just concluded, if we were able to keep up with all the maintenance and deferred projects that were there.
Yes, trustee Marcus, we actually had a little bit of carryover in our restricted maintenance budget from last year. The actual establishment and funding of the deferred maintenance project is in 2021, and we've actually made that 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 funding happen.
Okay, and I knew I noticed that we get to see, I mean, the wonderful news about the configuration, how I was so in favor of it and how I felt that it would do a great deal for our financial status and the operation of our district. And I don't want us to become too right now about the COVID, because the numbers that we are experienced with the lack of expenditure because of COVID, when we come back, we have to realize those expenditures are going to be there again. We shouldn't get overly satisfied with those numbers, I have a feeling, because we're going to be back in there spending those numbers, and we were very fortunate. From bad came good. We got some very significant savings. But we must remember that those savings will not be there, perhaps after we're able to go back to the cohort, the hybrid, and to maybe going back in person completely. I don't know if that will happen this year. I like the idea of what Mr. Spitz said about the fact that because we're a basic aid district, we should maybe contemplate upping the the basic aid that we, because of basic aid, we should up our 20% to 25% or somewhere in between as a recommendation for the reserve fund. I think that's a very important thing. And I'm very curious to know this year, how the tax poverty tax will affect our income in the revenue department. Because I think we are going to feel it in the long run. And those, I hate to be a bad omen, but I just have a feeling we're going to get, it's going to be a problem. And so I'm glad we're putting money aside for that, for that eventuality. And thank you again for the report, Mr. Roach.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Roach, for a very thorough presentation and very, very, very easy to follow for anyone watching, and I appreciate that. I think that I I agree with with your recommendation, and I really don't have any questions, and I just do want to emphasize on what Mrs. Walker Schuman has said, and also this Mr. Spitz that, and I believe this Marcus did to some degree, that, you know, really, one of the reasons this district hasn't really seen a deficit is because there was the action of reconfiguration that took place that really significantly has impacted our budget. And along with that vote came a lot of other things that happened, and I think we're much more which we're much more of a, you know, we're much more lenient, lean, lean, not lenient, more lean in our operation and operations, and that reflects our budget. And so I I think that, you know, I just really want to say thank you for being so proactive and in assigning our dollars and positioning the district in such a, you know, proactive manner. So thank you so much for for sharing this presentation. And again, I, as as one board member, I I agree with your numbers and I fully support those for adoption. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for us, Mr. Roach, on this subject before we move on to facilities and planning?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move our agenda, board members, forward to planning and facilities. And thank you, Mr. Blake, for staying with us. And so may I please have?
This is Hacker, just point of information. Yeah, we have another item.
Did I skip something?
11B.
11B. Okay, so 11B is another. You guys move the, I'm switching over, so just a minute, please.
I'll do it. I'll move ratification of an endorsement to the builder's risk insurance policy for the El Rodeo School Seismic retrofit and modernization project to add Beverly Hills High School B3, B4 modernization project.
Thank you.
All second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to mention one thing. I just noticed that in the, that there was, the coverage was, they took the the one without the options, and there was one option that I can understand, just the one that had something to do with floods. So I assume they figure we'll never see any floods, so they they took the one without the extra option. Is that correct?
Yes, trustee Marcus, that's that's correct. This this coverage is for buildings B3 and B4, and their analysis of the site is that we wouldn't need that coverage.
I figured, okay.
And I just, I wanted to share, I had asked the staff about this question also, and it was pointed out to me that because they acquired a broader coverage for the better price, we have saved over half a million. Did that come from your office, that answer, Wade?
Uh, yes, trustee.
Okay.
That's from.
Thank you. I think that's a good point to make. So in in consolidating this, we're saving money in the program. So thank you for for doing that as well.
Ms. Walker Schuman, I saw your hand go up briefly when Ms. Marcus was speaking. Were you trying to get my attention to say something? No? Okay. Mr. Spitz, do you have anything or Mr. Kashanian? No? Okay, great. And you do know that this is Beverly Hills, and sometimes we run into these emergencies that we don't foresee. So we're certain that we want this, right? Okay, good. All right, so let's call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Passes 5-0. I thought this was under planning and facilities, so thank you for pointing that out, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Okay, now we are moving to planning and facilities. May I please, Ms. Marcus, make the motion?
I approve for the ratification of a lease agreement with William Scotsman to provide three modular buildings at El Rodeo School for the relocation of the maintenance, maintenance and operations workspace from the Beverly Hills High School Building H.
I'll second that. Thank you. Any discussion, board members? No discussion? Great. Okay, all those in favor, we're going to call for the question?
Aye.
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 The pass is 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, may I please have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with 3QC for commissioning services for Beverly Hills High School B1, B2 modernization projects.
All second. Thank you. Any discussion, Mrs. Marcus?
I think for the benefit of the audience that might be listening or any of the stakeholders, we should explain exactly what that is, what's involved in that.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. We will grant that request, Mr. Blake.
Yes, commissioning is something that the school districts in practice, as well as in private sector practices, commissioning services, not at the end of the job, but as a service. Number one. Number two, it complies with Title 24 requirements. It's like a third-party service that reviews and confirms and certifies that your mechanical systems, your heating systems, your lighting systems, and all the systems that have electronics that are used for control systems, that all of those systems comply with the design intent and all the manuals and all of the material that's turned over to MNO, that all of those materials, they provide a Q and quality and assurance service. So the design intent, the district standards, intents, industry standard, Title 24, as well as training. Most important for us is the third party as opposed to the contractor. The commissioning agent's responsibility is to provide thorough and complete training for all of the MNO personnel. We don't leave that to a bidder. That's something that the district's interest is to make sure that we have that covered and covered completely. For the commissioning function and what they deliver, what they turn over, or manuals, quality assurance, checklist, material that assures the district that everything that was drawn intended, not just drawn, but intended in terms of its capability, its serviceability, everything having to do with the environment are certified. That information is then not part of, I had a question earlier about, is this a DSA requirement? It's not a DSA requirement. However, it is best practice and and complies with Title 24.
Thank you very much. We have three of those in a row, so that is explained for all three schools, three schools that are going to be doing it.
Okay, so any other questions before we take?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I had asked staff about this, and they did inform me that we did do the same process at Horst Man. So it's consistent with our practice overall in the in the construction program.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, let's call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Say aye. Great, thank you. Passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda.
I approve for the approval of agreement with GLEMAC for commissioning services for the Beverly Hills High School Buildings B3 and B4 Modernization Project.
So moved. Okay, any, Mr. Blake, did you want to lead us? Update here? Same thing?
Well, yes, it's the same thing. And just for further clarification in the procurement process, we went through a very lengthy procurement process with multiple service providers that we are familiar with in the industry. It was competitively bid and vetted by the MNO Department staff, as well as Ken Haas, on a grading system, included Pam Johnson and Margie and myself and DSA inspector, frankly, to ensure that the people that end up at the end of the project and the commissioning agent, that relationship has so much to do with the success of what we call the turnover to MNO. So those were the stakeholders involved. It wasn't just an advertisement for bidding. It was a very thorough vetting. And so each of the projects, there's there's two commissioning agents, and we selected them to be separate on the projects and not one company doing all three.
Sorry, any questions, board members? No? Okay, let's call for the question. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Someone, please make a motion for the next item on the agenda.
I'll move approval of agreement with GLEMAC for commissioning services for the El Rodeo School Seismic retrofit and modernization project.
All second.
Hey, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Walker Schuman, that belongs to you. Any update on this, Mr. Blake, that you want to inform us about before we take and call for the question or comments in the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus, I see the hand.
I noticed that the bid on this one is quite a bit higher than the other two. Mr. Blake, is there any, it's quite a bit higher. Is it because it's a bigger school? I mean, are the buildings that much different? I don't know.
Yes, it's a it's a larger scope. And if you, frankly, if you added B1, B2, and B3, B4 together with the with the other commissioning agent, it's within the same ratio of of cost and space.
Okay.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, we're going to call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Say aye. Okay, 5-0, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of the agreement.
Mr. Margaret?
Easy there, Mrs. Walker Schuman. I'll make a motion for the ratification of an agreement with Vector Resources, DBA Vector USA, to perform low voltage and electrical installation of ER for the relocation of the maintenance and operations workspace.
I'll take a second.
Okay, Mr. Blake, anything here that you want to inform the board or any comments?
Just as this one as well with the Scotsman, it's part of the reimbursement agreement with Metro.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, for clarifying that for us. Okay, any questions on the board? No? Okay, here we go. I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor, aye. Raise your hand. Thank you so much. Passes 5-0. Moving on.
I'll move approval of resolution 2020, 2021, 011 regarding independent learning center and district residency requirement for the 2021 school year.
So moved. Sorry, Mr. Margaret, I think I beat you there. Okay, I believe that there were some questions about this, and I see that Mrs. Chisholm just came on.
Mr. Blake looked like he's got a.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Are you saying goodbye?
I'm saying goodnight.
Bye-bye, Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Have a good one. Hi, Mrs. Chisholm. Welcome. Okay, I believe that there was a question about this. Mrs. Marcus, I see your hand, and I think I had the same question. So let's, you can, I defer to you.
You're muted, Mrs. Marcus.
I was concerned about the paragraph at the end, which when the student does return, he's taking ILC now because he's in another country, he's in another state, et cetera, et cetera. And when he return, and therefore he has to take it because of the fact that he's out of the city, and he's, that's the only way he can take it. He can't be not, you know, and because if we were to come back and he's still away, he couldn't come back. I understand all that. But I was concerned that when he comes back, the way it's written, he could say, now I want to go into the the live program, and I felt that it was not clear enough to him that because he's coming back, he should, I don't know that he should be allowed, but I don't think that it's can move right into it. And I felt that that was something that was not particularly stated. I felt that he should not, I don't think he should come back just because he moves back in, you know, that that he can, then I want to move. Well, then some of the other students who are in the ILC are going to see that, and they're going to want to make the change. So I think that it should be stipulated that they, when they come back, they should stay in the program until the semester break, or when there would be a break for them to come back to the live Beverly Hills.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't captured in such a way where it's clear what the options are when the student returns. And I think that needs to be clarified because, as Mrs. Marcus says, if the student returns in the middle of the semester, we wouldn't be able to provide options other than the ILC, I would imagine, unless something has changed. But if it hasn't changed, then it should be stipulated correctly. And very.
Part of the, wasn't that already part of the agreement with? That was already part of the, wasn't that already part of the agreement with I L C that parents had to make a commitment to doing it the entire semester?
Right, but this is different. But this is different. This is a resolution for for students that are not here. We're making special, we're making a special arrangement for those students. And it's specifically for students who are not here, who are already on the I L C. But it does, it says, I think it references that they have an option when they return. It's not very clear. That's why we, that's why we're raising the question.
Yes, so we we did um discuss this with counsel. Um, the way, the reason it's written the way it is, um, as as you said, we have, we have indicated that once you enroll in the I L C, it's for a semester. Um, however, for our students who are not physically residing in Beverly Hills, who are accessing the program through the I L C upon their return, um, per our discussion with with our with our attorney, it's almost like a new student moving into the district and they would be able to have a selection of whether they would want to go to live at the H U S D or I or the I L C. Um, he, our attorney didn't feel like we had legal precedent or legal standing to be able to say, no, you cannot. Of course, you could not go to live and be live, the live instruction if they requested it. Of course, we would talk with the families and say, look, it's October, you've missed two months of instruction. Do you really think you want to go in halfway through and and be able to catch up and participate and be held to the standard of being completing all that work or or jumping in midstream? Um, but the reason it's written like that is because um based on our attorney's recommendation, we could not say absolutely no, you could not return to live at B H U S D.
Well, that that was my concern because of the fact that it did not, you know, because of what I knew about the policy that, as we stated originally, that they had to stay in the I L C. And when they, if you opted for I L C, you stay in I L C to the semester. Here's a person who comes back and he's in an I L C because he's out, but he's going to be given the option then of going, well, not you're going to talk him out of it, I imagine, but you have that option. I'm only worried about other students who hear that the student has come in and now is opting and he gets a chance to go into it as as being equal opportunity for everybody. I mean, you may open yourself up to a bad door in the block. If one can do it, you may have others that would like to do it. That's all I'm saying.
I I I agree, Mrs. Marcus, and I wasn't part of the resolution. However, through ed code for independent study, when you read, the contract is what holds the student into the semester commitment. So those students that had applied through the application process, there are two questions at the end that the parent had to mark either they approved and that they read. And part of that was the length of time in which the independent study program would run. And that was the full semester. Some of these families that Laura is speaking about were not part of the application process, but under this board resolution process. And so we have the independent study contracts for the current students enrolled within the program. When we enroll the students that are not part at this time due to location, we will work with them on that application process and have them also fill out under ed code to say this is a the the timeline in which the contract is for for them to participate in the independent study.
I just wanted them, you know, I mean, I wanted it clear because it was not clear in in my opinion uh in the uh resolution.
Yeah, so we can, we can address it through the contract and as well and and the affidavit that the families have to sign as well. Um, saying that they that all this, all the pieces that they are attesting to are true and that they're under the penalty of perjury. So I think we can cover it between the contract and the affidavit. I don't, I don't know that the resolution is the the place that we would do it now that Mr. Seaman has discussed that contract. With, that would be a more appropriate place.
The people that are coming in, let's say, Joe Bo, Joe Smith coming in from, is living in Denver. And let's say he, he's going to have to sign that contract also then for that privilege of being in the I L C to take it in.
Yes, and that and that clause is in there.
Okay, well, okay, but that that clears it off.
What is the number of students that this um resolution is to affect?
So we're still working on getting the total number, Mrs. Hacker. Give me a second to look at um my Google Doc that has that data. Um, the last time I looked was late last week. Um, and I remember seeing approximately fifteen families.
And so, and so, and we verified that they still own or lease a property here and that.
All, all the, all the, all the pieces that are listed. And the and the um resolution are are being investigated and must be satisfied prior to enrollment. And if they cannot produce them, we will not allow them to be enrolled and we will not forward their names to uh Mr. Seaman to enroll in the I L C until those uh requirements are satisfied.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions or comments? No? Great, thank you. All those in favor, um, say aye.
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 Okay, that's five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm, for being with us tonight and for clarifying your resolution. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. So it screens over here. Okay, that concludes our meeting. Am I right? Yes. Communication from board members? Any communication?
You.
Okay, Mr. Kashanian?
Thank you. Uh, students, the survey that I've been waiting approval on is still being looked at by the administrators at the high school. So as soon as it gets approved, it will be sent out. Also, if you're interested in starting a new club or continuing an existing club at Beverly Hills High School, the Club Summit is tomorrow, Wednesday during lunch, starting at twelve fifteen on Zoom. The Zoom link is tinyurl.com backslash Club Summit. There's also a flyer going around on social media so you could find the information there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kashanian. Uh, Mr. Margot, any questions or comments?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to say quickly, um, welcome back to all the staff and students. Um, school's been back a week. It's going to move quickly. And uh, thank you for everybody in the community for bearing with us as so many of us are working through the idiosyncrasies of this pandemic to try to make sure that everybody stays safe and everybody gets back into the classroom safely and in a timely manner. We know that is what's uh best and we need to do it correctly. So thank you for bearing with us. Thank you for asking questions and not making assumptions. Have a great week.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Marcus?
Actually, I think I'm next.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm looking at Ms. Marcus. She's next on my screen, but you're next. Absolutely. Go ahead.
So this is, I think, been a really positive meeting. Feel it's important mentions happened in our community, uh, something that came to light. Um, there was an email sent out to Hawthorne families on Friday addressing an email that was sent to a parent at um Hawthorne, allegedly from a group of other parents at Hawthorne. And the email was awful. It was disgusting. It was dishonorable. It was abhorrent, hateful, divisive, and completely cowardly because it was addressed anonymously. It was from anonymous email uh address. And I just, I I just think we've got so much that we're trying to do right now, getting our kids back to schools. How each family is getting through this, trying to make sure their education is right. The last thing on earth that we need is this kind of negativity. And I'm really, it makes me really sad for our community that this is where energy is being spent and this is where the attention is going right now. It breaks my heart for our community that there's so many hateful people out there that are using the name of the school to try and communicate such negativity and such uh awful. I just want to put it out there that I really, I community, I'm really disappointed to read these things that I read. I think it's very um upsetting and heartbreaking for all of the parties involved. And I really hope that this uh is addressed. I hope it's investigated. And I really hope we all can um agree that more is expected, that this type of thing is just not who we are. Um, so I just want to put that out there.
Mrs. Marcus?
Okay, um, I would like to uh and uh just say that it's been a great meeting and I love the way the meeting went. I I want to go back because I want to make something very clear about my feelings about something. As you know, I have been a certificated teacher who taught in Beverly Hills for well over forty, fifty years. I believe that gives me the right to explain my position on the independent study program and its policy. There is no mistaking my belief that students will get a better understanding of subject matter in face to face instruction, which is offered in the brick and mortar system. There is no substitute for live interaction and instruction. I believe our school board members are in agreement on that. I would like to make my opinions abundantly clear about the policy. Two weeks ago, the board had a very robust discussion about the policy six one five eight on independent study. During the discussion, it was pointed out that some students were able to take classes in the independent study and the regular class period at the same time. In other words, they were commingling their schedules between both schools. It was also pointed out that some parents did not know that this was an option, or maybe it wasn't an option. I don't know. In looking at the policy, I would like to quote several sections because I feel that we are not adhering to the guideline in the policy. I quote, "Independent study may be offered only to students who can achieve in this program as well as or better than they would in the regular classroom." "Independent study shall offer means of individualizing the education plan for students whose needs may be met best through study outside of the regular classroom setting." "Independent study may be used as an option to encourage students to remain in school." Are we actually using these guidelines when we allow students to enroll in the independent study program? Nowhere in the board policy or elsewhere is there any indication that the program is open to all students based solely on the desires of the parents or the students involved to take these classes. Indeed, the role of the superintendent or his designate, presumably the SST or a counselor in this case, suggests who and who might make that decision. What is it that makes the, who is it that makes the determination of whether a student needs may be best met through the study outside of the regular classroom? Who can achieve in this program as well as or better than they would in the regular classroom? What happened to the SST and the counselors? The teachers in Beverly Hills who teach are single subject certificated and teach at a much love deeper level and in person. We are paying for highly qualified, certificated teachers in the brick and mortar system. When students take classes in the I L C, we still have to pay for their enrollment in the class. If the class is available in Beverly Hills High School, why do we need to pay for the students to take a class in the I L C, which is taught digitally? Our enrollments are dropping already, necessitating fewer sessions per subject in the brick and mortar. Just last year, we voted to combine some foreign language classes because of declining enrollment. We are making it even harder to take classes by dropping sections in subject that's forcing students to take classes in the I L C. If we allow more students to enroll in the IS or the I L C program, our class offerings will drop even further, making it impossible for students to arrange their class schedule with fewer offerings. We did not vote to change the policy, nor am I advocating a change at this time. This policy, the policy does not specifically list the type of students who might be eligible or candidates for the program. But it is clear that the IS program policy is written for students with special circumstances. The I, the independent study show program or I L C should be limited to students who meet these criteria. What I'm advocating for is that we follow the guidelines and as outlined in the policy and apply them through proper channels using the SST and counselor recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I just want to say again, thank you to uh the administration and to the teachers for starting our school year. Um, on such a a positive note, I think our students are engaged and we are um making progress already. We're already in our second week of school. Can you believe that? I mean, the second week of school already, when it just felt like yesterday we were beginning school. So um, I'm just very pleased with the MOU. And I think that our students are benefiting from that. And I really want to thank our teachers for leading um our classrooms. You know, I just want to say that um, you know, there's been a lot that has happened over the weekend. I I don't like to bring attention to any negativity. I think people deserve an opportunity to to handle matters privately. I also believe that, you know, if there is a police investigation in any capacity, whenever there's a situation where they need to be, where they need to be involved, that we should let the authorities handle the investigation. I believe in the administration's ability to handle those matters privately. I think that's the choice um for most families. And, you know, I I condemn racism and discrimination in all forms. And um, I will say this, I think that, you know, as a person of color, I will say that we as a society should do more than, you know, a banner that represents a bunch of signatures around a theme. I I think uh that's a first step in the right direction. But I think it, you know, we should really bring more um attention to the the sensitive issue that is affecting not just, you know, our community, but obviously communities around our country. And um, you know, it's it's the year twenty twenty and you know, it's sometimes it baffles me that we're still talking about racism and discrimination and um language that is not um, that is not um decent and um, you know, it's just, it's that is not, that is not positive. And um, what I will say is this, is that um, you know, we need to really take um, take an opportunity to really reflect where we are. And, you know, we are, I I believe that we are um as a country, I think we're we're really struggling with some issues. But I I also think that we we can promote the best in us when we, when we come together as a community. And I would hope and and say that we should focus on the positive things that happen. I think this is a wonderful community, Beverly Hills. I I love this community and I think um, there's a lot of great things that happen here. And I, for one, have felt very welcomed and loved and supported. And um, we should do that with each other. I think that that we're stronger when we do that um, you know, together. So um, I want to respect everyone's um opinions, but I think we shouldn't uh rush to judgment until, you know, all the, we we shouldn't even be involved in this conversation. I think it's a private matter. I really believe that. And it's real some, it's really sensitive. So for um, for those reasons, I won't speak about anything or anybody or anything in specific. But thank you for tonight. I think today was a very positive meeting. And I think part of that was that it was a short meeting. Let's be honest about that. I think we've had very, very long meetings. So I think short is good. And so I want to um let you all go and enjoy your families and and hopefully you can all have dinner. Have a great night. Thank you, Dr. Brege, and thank you to the staff. Bye.
Bye. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.